Good evening, everyone, and welcome to another episode of Turn Left. I am your host, Indiana's Own Dana Black, coming to you live. Yes, all the way live from Black Girl Studios, where we talk about Indiana politics from the left side of things. Okay, so this is a Turn Left special because there's so many amazing candidates out there. I want to talk to as many as I possibly can, but I also know like Act Blue has me running around. So you gotta do it when you can do them, you know what I'm saying? And so I want to thank my guests this afternoon who decided to come and hang with me. And we're going to record and broadcast this Turn Left interview because getting to know all of our candidates from all over the state, no matter where they hail from, is so important. And we want to want you to know who you need to support. So my guest today, coming all the way from Zionsville in Boone County. Y'all give it up for Monisha Mitchell, who is running for Zionsville Town Council. Monisha, welcome to the show.
Thank you. Thank you, Dana. You know, I love your show. I'm so honored to be here.
It is my pleasure. So tell the people who you are and where you come from.
So I'm Monisha Mitchell. Like you said, I'm running for Zionsville Town Council in District 3. I come from Indianapolis, so not far away. I grew up on the north side of Indianapolis. I went to graduate from Pike High School.
Pike.
Not gonna say when, but go. And the first time I visited Zionsville was for riding lessons. I don't know if you've been here, but on Michigan Road, kind of where the Supertarget and all that is, none of that was there. And so I used to go out and ride horses and it's beautiful. It's
What got you into riding?
Different now because there's been some development.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so that's when I kind of first fell in love with the community.
Okay, I gotta ask, sis, how did you end up riding horses?
My mom and dad had me do everything. I appreciate the privilege that I had to get to do so many different things. But I was in piano and tennis and ballet. And my mom's heritage is German, so I took German lessons. So I was doing all the things and riding was one of them.
You know, I love like the sound of horses, hooves. I don't care where it's on pavement or gravel or sand. It's just something that's very relaxing, but I'm allergic to horses. Yes, I can't ride. So I'm like excited that you can ride. I can't ride. So
Yeah, not anymore, but yeah, then I loved it. Yeah.
And Zionsville is a beautiful place. I know that I've had some other candidates on who are running for town council. And they talked about how they are looking to make Zionsville a destination spot. What is, tell us some things about Zionsville that you love.
So first and foremost, I love our parks. We have, often Zionsville is referred to as a town within a park.
Okay.
And so many beautiful parks, so many community amenities, lots of green space. And I really love that. It has given me a new appreciation for nature and our rural community. And growing up, you know, in Indiana, you think Indiana, you think farmland. And Zionsville is definitely that. We have lots of beautiful farms. So that's one of the things I love. I don't just live in Zionsville. I worship here. I work here. My business, I'm a local business owner and my business is right on Main Street. I shop local whenever I can. And so I love our shops. If you've never been to the village, please come be my guest and I'll take you to all the cool little spots. But yeah, so there's so many things to love about Zionsville, but those are some of my favorites.
Okay, so you see this beautiful city and you think, I need to run for office. What was it that made you feel like you needed to be a spokesperson for the community in Zionsville?
A couple of things. First is when I got engaged in advocacy and serving in the community, I noticed that I was often the only person of color in the room and sometimes the only woman in the room. And so I just think it is, I've heard you reference this and I reference it a lot too. We, the people. And this democracy is about all of us. We all get a say. I'm the daughter of an immigrant. And so I think for children of immigrants, not that it's not special to everybody, but the democracy means something different. My dad came from a country where they were in civil war so that they could speak their native language.
Wow, wow.
So representative government's really important to me. And I feel like I can be that voice. Now, part of what encouraged me to run in this seat in particular is I just don't think District 3 has been represented well. If you can't see me, you can't lead me.
Ooh, come on.
And so when we have sitting town council people saying they don't think they need to celebrate my ancestors on Juneteenth.
Wow.
You know, that stirs me up to feel like maybe we need different leadership here.
Absolutely. I can, oh, wow. I mean, and this is like a thing that is pervasive throughout the country right now. People are wanting to literally discount a huge chunk of American history, which is black history. And for that individual, whoever that person is, we will not mention their name, to suggest that as, as an American citizen, your history has no value. Yeah, they not the kind, they not the right kind of leadership that you need. When you hear those things and you hear people talking about removing bits of our history, how do you think you can influence changing of minds or changing of heart? Or do you think you can and it's just a matter of me showing up and being about the business?
Yeah, it's a lot of that. It's a lot showing up and being about the business. You know, I often say it isn't my intent to try to make Zionsville more diverse. It's my intent to make it more inclusive of the diversity that is already here.
Oh, I love that. I love that.
So, you know, we don't have 20% people of color in Zionsville, like, you know, central Indianapolis. But we need to make sure that everyone is represented. And so whether or not it's the majority, those people still get a voice. And I think that's really important. I think part of it is being in the room. Part of it is relationship. So I really try to connect with people one-on-one, which is challenging in a campaign because, you know, if I sit down and have a conversation with you, we're here. You know what I mean? In a room full of people, it's a little bit different. But I think it's really important to, to listen to people. People are being talked at as opposed to listened to. And, you know, I said, you can't lead me if you can't see me. You can't lead me if you're not listening to me.
Exactly. You're not hearing what my needs are. You're just basing what you think I need on your perspective. And that's never a good thing. Never.
And when, when other people are making decisions for you. I was at IDEA and somebody, one of the panels was talking about how people feel that the parties aren't hearing them and that people aren't, I'm trying to think of the exact phrase they used. People aren't voting in their own best interest. No, you're just not listening.
Okay.
People are voting in their interest. We're just not understanding what that interest is.
Interesting. That is a real interesting perspective because I'm guilty of saying that people are voting against their interests. How did you come to that conclusion? Was it just because you felt like people weren't listening? Or had you talked to people and heard something and understood why they voted another way?
Yeah, I'm talking to people. So by trade, I'm a therapist. I'm a licensed therapist. I've been a therapist for almost 20 years. I specialize in mood disorders and trauma.
Okay, okay.
So I'm always talking to people. And like I said, I'm really engaged in the community, so I'm talking to people in the community too. And it isn't human nature to vote in your, not in your own interest.
Okay, okay.
Who is acting in our own self-interest, even when those are maladaptive behaviors? Even when somebody looks at you and goes, that's not serving you. There is something in me that that is serving. There is something in me that that is speaking to. So, you know, when you kind of see radicalization in the political parties, they're speaking to some, something in that person. It might not be their financial interest. I used to work at an insurance company and I would talk to people every now and then who were benefiting from Obamacare. They would rail on Obamacare. They would say it was the worst thing ever and I hate it. And sometimes I'd say, you know, you run Obamacare. That's why we're having this conversation. But there's something that was not speaking to them about that. There's something that was more important to them than even their own financial or medical interest.
How are you, and I'm, from a therapist's perspective and as a political, I really want the political perspective, right? Because people are seeing you as a candidate, not necessarily as a therapist. How are you able to pull out from them what those interests are that, that makes them, and what we see is them voting against their interests? How do you get them to open that up to you?
They're telling you. Like as soon as I meet people, they're telling me why they're dissatisfied with the way things are. And they're saying the things that are important to them. They just don't necessarily always make sense to people who are in a silo.
Okay.
You're only, if you're in your own silo and you're only talking to other people who sound like you and somebody comes from over here and says, well, what about this? Or what's really important to me is this, or I don't appreciate this. We just tune things out. We tend to tune things out when we don't agree with people. So if you will, if you can set your own views aside and really listen to what people are saying they care about. I know that my mom is constantly sending me articles about inflation because I tell her how people say that they're struggling. And she wants me to understand that the economy is not as bad as people think, right? But what I'm trying to tell her is, I don't, nobody, it's not about what the New York Times says.
Right, right.
People are telling me that they can't make ends meet and that they're struggling. Then I need to hear that and not come to them with some like statistics that say, no, no, no. The economy's not bad. The economy's, you know, doing well. They're like, but I can't afford my medicine.
Right. It's, it's the abstract, right? It's the abstract. The economy is doing well, but my pocketbook hurts. And how does it relate to what I'm going through? So if you're talking about what's happening on Wall Street and I don't have any stocks, then it ain't doing me no good. I love that. Was it your, your formal training as a therapist that helped you tune in to certain buzzwords and certain things that, that draw that, that allow you to recognize what they're saying?
I think it's kind of just my upbringing and who I am. And then my profession came out of that. It's more so that I want to hear from people. And, you know, probably also growing up in a household that was so diverse, it was really important for me to understand where different people were coming from. So I think it's just who I am to try to understand different perspectives. I can hold many views at one time, you know? Yeah, yeah, yeah. People struggle with that though. People like things to be black and white. Just, you know, it's one thing or another, but there, we are operating in a lot of gray right now. And we need to be able to embrace that and listen to different sides, even when they're not agreeing with us.
I love it. I love your perspective. This is a very different take. It's not my typical political take on talking to constituents. So I'm really like soaking this up because I'm learning something from you today and I'm really appreciating that. So when you are out knocking on doors, what are your constituents telling you are the main issues in Zionsville that they want your, their elected officials to, to address?
Development.
Okay.
Development is the main thing that people seem to be concerned about from different perspectives. So some people, you know, if you have kids in schools, you're worried about class sizes. And what does development, development mean in terms of my kid's education? We had a safety forum here in my neighborhood some time ago. It wasn't a political event, but it was just some neighbors came to me. There were several instances in the community and people said, hey, it's developing really fast here around us and we're worried about what that means in terms of, you know, increased crime in the area. So I called the sheriff and I called the chief and I said, hey, can we sit down with the community and talk? And we did. People are concerned, you know, if you love green spaces like I do, people are concerned about what development means to green spaces. So development is one of the primary issues that I hear about all the time. And then the other is there has been some division in our community, like you see at a national level, but on a local level. And I've said many times, you know, I think there's accountability on both sides. But people are tired of it. People do not, this is not an extremist community. This is, we are a moderate community. And the kind of negativity and the division, A, is not serving us. Like literally stuff doesn't get done. And B, people are just, don't want to hear about it. People aren't, I don't hear a lot about party. Every now and then I'll knock doors and people will be like, it's a Democrat.
Right, right, right.
You know, because town council has never had a Democrat.
Wow.
And never had a person of color. Or I'm sorry, never had a black person.
A black, okay, black person, okay. And so with Emily Styron stepping down, she was the democratically elected mayor. The fact that she won the whole city says that there's, there's some, some progressive and moderate thoughts in just, in these different pockets. And so we just have to tap into all those like-mindedness. Now that you've heard from your constituents about what they are most concerned with, tell me your three main platform issues that you developed after having those conversations?
Yeah, so going back to development, the first is mindful development. And I coined that term, you know, when I was thinking about, what are people saying when they're concerned about development? There's a technique we use in therapy called mindfulness. And it's about being present with intentionality moment by moment. And so I thought, what would it be like to focus on present residents? Because when you think about development, development is for the benefit of somebody in the future. It's not about right now. But my constituents are my constituents now. People who might move to Zionsville in this brand new neighborhood, they're not here yet. We need to listen to what people who live here now are saying. We need to be intentional about development. So we can't say yes to everything. We can't say no to everything. But what we do need to keep in mind is when we say yes to something today, we are saying no to something in the future. And will never again be green space. That land will never again be a farm. We need to be more intentional and, you know, about our decisions. So that's one. The other is that we, it's an affluent community and people want to see community amenities on par with expectations.
Ooh.
To do that, we need to really be able to pour into our town employees to make those things happen.
Okay, okay.
Many of whom can't afford to live here.
Right.
But I would very much like to see, they're in some communities, KRO grants. Maybe it's a stipend, not to force people to live here, but it should be an option. You shouldn't be willing to give your life up for mine and you can't be my neighbor.
Right, right. That doesn't make sense.
Unacceptable to me.
You're talking about law enforcement and firefighters, first responders, all those folks.
But also, you know, parks, also public works. You know, it just does not make sense to me that people who serve us can't afford to live here. And again, they don't have to, but can we not get creative about finding opportunities? You know, finding grants, finding other ways to make it a possibility for people to want it to be a possibility.
I love that. I love that.
And then the next is fresh leadership. So, you know, again, we've had some division. I often tell people, if you've watched a town council meeting, you will notice that a therapist would probably be helpful.
I love that.
Lots of big, lots of big feelings. And so, not all the time, but sometimes. So I think people really need someone who knows how to communicate, knows how to listen, as well as, you know, share ideas. Somebody who's open to diverse thought, somebody who can hold two ideas at the same time, somebody who knows how to collaborate. I've worked on interdisciplinary teams my entire career. And so, and, you know, everybody has a different way of how to serve this client or this patient. And we all have to work together to come up with, with what works. So I've done that my whole career. And, you know, that's the other thing that I think I bring is just an ability to have a fresh take.
I love it. And so, you know, town councils, city councils, they're all the fiscal body of the local government. Talk about your experience in understanding budgets and understanding the nuances that come with the number. And it's not just the bottom line and how you will look at your budgets that are being presented and figure out what's the best for the community as a whole.
So I do have a background in public management. One of my degrees or graduate certificate in public management. And so, you know, I learned about budget, municipal budgets and governance. I worked for, managed a number of nonprofit organizations and, you know, was involved in managing those budgets. And I'm a student, so I'm continually, continually learning. Right now, we have a number of people on town council and some who are running who, whose expertise is fiscal.
Okay.
But the town council is not only the fiscal body of our town. It is the fiscal body, but it's like saying that Congress is the fiscal body of the United States. It is, that is a function, but it's not the only function.
Okay, okay.
So I think having a basic general knowledge of budgets and having managed large budgets in the past is helpful. But I won't pretend to be an expert in finance. There are other people who I will collaborate with who currently serve or people who are running who have that expertise. And I look forward to how we work together to make sound financial decisions for the town.
You know, I love that answer. One, you didn't try to fluff it off. Like you said, okay, look, I understand it's the budget. I can take care of budgets. That's not my strong suit, but I will surround myself with people who know the things that I don't know. I think that's how you build an amazing team. Like I can, I am the best front singer of a band. I'm not really, but like I'm, I'm a good front man, right? I'm the one that you want out front hyping the crowd up. But you want somebody else fundraising. You want somebody else doing the organizing, right? I know, and I think, I don't think a lot of people understand that you don't have to be an expert at everything to be a vital, to play a vital role on the city council. So that's like one of the best answers that I have ever heard. But since you brought it up, what are some of the other responsibilities of your town council?
Management. So, you know, the administrator for the town is technically the manager of, you know, the employees and things like that. But we had quite a challenging time when the mayor sued the town council about who technically can make decisions about hiring and firing. And the town council, a court decided that the town council has a role in that. And so I have lots of management experience. I do excel at that. I don't excel at everything, but I do excel at that.
I love it.
And so I know how to encourage, motivate, listen to employees, how to, you know, be on the front lines where they are and not always have this view. You have to sometimes be able to have that view, right? So I think that's an important quality that I bring.
I love it. I think, I think that you have a great perspective on what it is, what would be your role in your town council. So what do you say to those constituents? You talk, you know, obviously you're not having a 30-minute conversation with all of your constituents because you'd never get all the doors knocked, right? But what is it that, after you've listened, you have your platform. What are you saying to constituents, you know, when, when you're knocking on doors? What are you giving them back? Because they're feeding you, so what are you feeding them?
The ability to represent them. I think that's first and foremost. You know, that's part of every conversation. I'm listing and then I'm, you know, making note of certain issues and following up with people about certain issues or actually taking action on certain issues because they want responsiveness. Don't knock on my door during election time and never talk to me again. I didn't just pop up, you know, when I decided to run. I've been around talking to people for several years. And so that's really important. I knock on doors that people say, nobody has ever knocked on my door before.
Wow, wow.
Or that they've never had a conversation with a community leader. And so I think too, relatability is really important because I would watch town council meetings. I've been watching town council meetings for years. And I would watch the meetings and sometimes be like, what is going on? Like, I don't, I don't want to understand. This is not a transparent process. It seems like there was, you know, a lot of backdoor conversations that I didn't quite get. And I feel that when I'm talking to people, that they're not engaged. But also, we don't make that easy. Our meetings aren't, one of the town council meetings, and this came up at one of your recent chats with another candidate, 7:30 in the morning, who can attend that?
Exactly. Don't even get me on that because that one brings up some bad. I even said a curse word in one of my shows and I very seldom curse. I was so, I was like, oops, sorry. Didn't mean that. But I was just so hot. But you're right, you know, transparency, people talk about transparency. Yeah, you said the meeting was going to be at 7:30 and people knew, but who the heck can make it? That was, even when one of your council members couldn't make it. I appreciate that because that was some bogusness. But I think that also goes back to what you were talking about, about being inclusive, not just about diversity, but being inclusive about voices. Why would you have a school board meeting, which was as important as that was, at 7:30 in the morning when the teachers couldn't be there? You know, just, you know, the whole nine. I love that. And, and it sounds to me like your love of your community, more than anything else, is the reason why you want to represent people. It's not about the political cloud, because you obviously, as a therapist and your own small business, you are doing just fine, but you want the rest of your city to be fine too. Speak to it.
Yes. Yeah, I, you know, I don't seek to really benefit for running for town council, if I'm being honest. Our town, it's not a real financial benefit.
No.
It probably will cost me money. It already has to run, of course. And so I don't have any property interest or business interest. We have a developer running. You know, I am not in that circle. This does not serve me in this way. I want to serve the community, not the other way around. And so I do think it's important to, like I said, I live here. I work here. I worship here. I serve here. It's, and I don't think you see that in some of the people who are currently serving. And that's okay. That's all right. It's great to serve in Indianapolis, but there are needs here. It may not look the same, but we have to be committed, committed to really engaging in our community. I, it's funny because one of the things I thought when I started the campaign is, I already go to everything. I'm already at every festival, every event. How hard can it be to just go ahead and run? Well, you already know.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I was shocked at, I go to these events and during a non-election season, I never saw our town leaders.
That's sad.
The skewed, you know, if it was an issue that kind of leans left or right, it's like, only these people go to this, only these people go to that. That's crazy. I go to everything. And so we just need leaders who are engaged. Because if we want constituents to engage, which I don't think everybody does, but if we want constituents to engage, we have to engage with them, not just during an election year. We, you know, I'd love to have office, I intend to have office hours. I intend to compute, continue to serve in the ways that I have. I continue to, I plan to continue to show up to things, you know? I'm not gonna run and then check out.
Right.
Win or lose, I'm not gonna run or check out. I'm here.
I love that. I love that. All right, Monisha, tell the people where they can find you.
So MitchellForZionsville is our website. VoteMMitchell@gmail is our email account. So they can find us at either one of those places. We have a really exciting event coming up on September 30th with Senator Hunley. And one of our, yes, and it's at a local bookstore called Curious Squirrel. If, whether you come to the event or not, go to the Curious Squirrel. It is the, literally, it is the most inclusive bookstore you will ever find.
Well, make sure I get that flyer. If you've made a flyer or something so I can, so I can start advertising for that and get that out for Well, make sure I get that flyer. If you've made a flyer or something, so I can, so I can start advertising for that and get that out for, for the people. Because, you know, anytime I see sisters doing stuff together, it makes me happy because the world wants us to be in competition with each other. We're in cooperation with each other.
Yes, yes, yes. I'm all about lifting people up too. It's not, and you said this once about putting the ladder down to other people, which you did for me. So I wanted to share too, I wouldn't be running if it wasn't for you. You came and talked to our class at Who's Your Woman Forward? And you said that you shared the value of running, win or lose, you know, you said you will make space for someone else if you do this. So I bear that in mind, especially when it gets a little challenging, I bear that in mind.
And I
appreciate you for that.
You trying to make me cry. You trying to make me cry over here. I'm trying to keep it together. I live it. I breathe it. It's, you know, and I hope to infuse it into other humans that there's so much value. And look at you, you're running an amazing campaign. You, first of all, I am a totally hype person, but just having this conversation with you, you've like mellowed me out. Like, I'm not screaming and hollering. Like, you have a, you have a way. And I imagine once you get on that council and you're sitting down and people are being, you know, disorganized or can't seem to get their thoughts together, or, you know, lashing out because things aren't going the way they want. I have a feeling just your presence will make a change on that city council and bring people together. I'm telling you, I'm hyped. Like, but you have, you bring a sense of calmness to a space and even to me. And thank you for sharing. Like, yo, I, I, I pray that my words are, are getting through. And so thank you for sharing that. So I'm gonna keep preaching it, y'all. So if you ask me to talk, I'm gonna talk about it. Y'all, this was a special edition of Turn Left. Y'all give it up for Monisha Mitchell, who's running for Zionsville Town Council, District Three. And if you're watching on YouTube, please click her donate link below so that you can donate to her campaign. Whether it's $5, $10, she may need to buy a yard sign, she may need to buy mailers, or she may just need to buy water for the folks that are knocking doors for her. And if, and you can either give your time, your talent, or your treasure to help Ms. Mitchell win that seat and become a historic figure. The fact that in 2023, we're still talking about first, it's still there. We still doing it. But you can help her impact Zionsville by becoming a member of that township board. Y'all, look for more Turn Left specials where I'm gonna interview candidates, little spotlight. Hopefully you guys loved this conversation. I know I did. And I will bring you more candidates as often, as often as I possibly can. Thank you so much for tuning in. I will holler at y'all next time. Peace. Turn Left is the property of Black Girl IT Solutions. Executive producer, Indiana's own Dana Black. Music by www.bensound.com.